We were told that the Unified Arts, Band, Strings, Art, Drama, that kind of stuff, that the way that they were gonna follow it at Coons was going to be in line with how they were gonna do it at Kane Creek, especially since a third of the population was after this, after leaving Coons, was gonna go to Kane Creek and match up with kids who had been there the previous year because Kane Creek's remained a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade school. So, to try to have a level playing field, which was a lot of parents' concerns, that was, you know, we talked about that, you know, Unified Arts, there was a lot of talk about that, "Oh, yes, oh, yes." If they take Band, they'll still get to choose a Unified Art, you know, similar to how they do it at Kane Creek. Well, guess what happened? We moved in last January, so, you know, halfway through the fifth grade year, and come May, there was one quick meeting with the kids in the auditorium for them to decide if they wanted to do Band, which was year-round, and typically is, or Strings, which was six months, or something called the Wheel. Now, you know, they, they didn't really promote this as a parent meeting, they said parents could come in, it was during the school days like an assembly. Personally, I think they should've had that opened more in the evening for working parents to get in because there was really nothing that even came home, other than a brochure saying, "Your choices are Band, Strings, or the Wheel." So, basically, my daughter had to make a decision of, if I choose to do Band, I don't get the opportunity to choose Art, or Drama, or Chorus, in Spanish, because those, you know, because those were the choices. Because I have to, you know, Band will be my only Unified Art. If I choose Strings, then I, you know, I have Strings for six months, cool, I get to choose my Unified Art after that. Oh, no. Your Unified Art would fall into wherever it was on the Wheel that your home room was in. So, for my daughter, and this is how it came down for an 11-year-old, who is the customer in this situation, I don't wanna miss out on Art and Drama. I love Art and Drama. I would love to take Strings. However, I don't wanna risk falling somewhere on that Wheel after six months where I miss out on Art and Drama. So, she had to make that decision, and it's good, it's a learning experience, I mean, I think kids, you know, should have to learn, it's a give and take. But, at the same time, had she been at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade school, she would not have had to have made that choice. And that is not how it was sold to us as parents. So, they totally did the opposite of what we were told at these parent meetings that they were going to do. And it, it really upset a lot of people. And for me personally, all I can say is that I'm really glad that my daughter plays piano because she at least has the opportunity to learn an instrument, because I think there are a lot of kids out there that probably missed the opportunity to pick up an instrument. Now, I will say this, Coons has a, they have like 120 band members now, so it is like one of the largest band groups that they had, and they had to split it, I think, into three different classes. So, a lot of kids did choose that, but there's still a lot of kids that didn't have the opportunity, that maybe had wanted the opportunity, but didn't wanna miss out on something else. So, you know, that's just a classic example of if you're gonna have parent meetings, and I think Asheville City Schools does a great job of that, then don't waste my time by not listening to my concerns, especially if it's the majority of the parents. I know you can't answer everybody's concerns, you can't make everybody happy, but it seems to me if you're having all of this, you know, documentation and suggestions coming into you, and it's overwhelmingly in support of something, you would not do the exact opposite. And then wonder why you don't have the support from the parents, you know, it's very clear.
In terms of needs, do you need a comment about, if you ask a question, now, we need to figure this out right now. Okay, how many parents, and this is a rhetorical question, how many parents already feel like they don't have a voice in the school system, so they don't bother themselves for something like this, because, you know, they feel like, you know, "I've got a Saturday, I've got some due, they're not gonna care anyway," so what is it? What names should I just check off just to do it? Because whoever's in there is just gonna get messed up anyway. And I'm not saying that's a good attitude to have, however, if you're willing to promote transparency and promote involvement and community, to truly have a community-led school system to where you can meet the customers' needs, I'm wondering how is that okay to have a system where you have to know the questions to ask? I have a graduate degree, I can ask 100 questions all day long, and I try not to, but I can. There are many parents, many, many parents, for a large variety of reasons, that either don't know what kinds of questions to ask, they don't know all the details that go within one question, and I personally feel like it should not be up to the customer to be able to come up with the exact question, to get a question answered if they have a concern or likely with the toxic stuff. Well, if I were being told there's a new school being built up, I couldn't care less if it's inhaled or, or physical contact or whatever happens, I personally would not wanna put my child at risk any for another. However, I would not know to ask, is it indoors or outdoors, or which system is it? So, there's...
That's part of the problem with the school board right now. The one thing, they have public comment, and the public comment, you get three minutes to go up there and speak, and you get to talk to a board that just stares at you and gives you nothing. And I don't, I think something needs to change with the public comment.
You can't ask questions.
You can't ask questions now, but if you give a nice, positive review of something they did, you'll get the thought out of them. But if you're criticizing or giving a constructive criticism, you get nothing.
So, what I'm asking in terms of transparency, how would you work to try and make sure that people did not have to come in and really sophisticated with their questions? The newspapers in general are like written for eighth grade levels. You have to assume, for better or for worse, that not everybody's gonna know those details.
I think, I think sometimes when you get in a group, you may have to say, "Here are some of the issues that we're dealing with now, we're thinking about this, this." For example, we mentioned the topics here, we mentioned the maintenance, we're mentioning these things, and from that, that stirs some conversation. You're exactly right. What happens in school, people that are involved in school usually are people that have had positive experiences, they had negative experiences, they, you know, that's why we have PTO meetings at school, trying to draw them in. That's why we always like to have volunteers. People are afraid, you know, about, about the educational level. That's why you, you have to give them some things, here's some topics, what do you think of this? And from that, usually something will come up that you hadn't even thought of. That's why I mentioned our cars. When, when we were talking about it with our folks, you know, we're having a lot of cars, you know, we tried to mention, and that's when a parent came up with the idea. I think you have to do that, I don't think you expect, you folks would come in to do this because you have some idea of what school is and some of that. People that are not here may not have any idea, they may not even know who's running for boards in the first place. So, that's why you have, it not only, from that standpoint, but it involves us communicating to folks and talking to folks, and what's the issue, what do you see, well, how do you think this could help? And you know what I learned just personally, some of the folks that aren't involved in school are very, very smart about how things ought to be done. You can just listen to, gee, you know, and so, you're right, that's part of, we would have to do that, I couldn't expect folks to come in and start asking questions about this, this, this. We have to help them with that.
Yeah, I have a question about the board. The transparency issue is my main concern, because a lot of things on the board that happen, I didn't really know about until I picked up a little paper in Fairview where Lisa Baldwin had an article about what's going on. And I thought, that's very strange, that's the only way that I really know about what, what goes on. And I was, I was wondering, I'm a parent that, I do read the newspaper, I listen to the radio, I'm on the internet, I read a lot of things, I know, I keep abreast of what my kids are doing. But the parents that don't have time to do that, I'm lucky that I do have time to do that, but how are you about maybe bringing kind of a diverse population of this county? Because this county is, is changing a lot, it's not how it used to be even, even 11 years ago when I started living here. How are you about maybe bringing those parents, I mean, involved in it, you know, Hispanic population is growing here, how, how do you feel about, you know, meeting their needs? And then, and meeting, you know, parents that are, you know, want a lot of different activities for their kids, like say the Strings program, my daughter's involved in that, which I was extremely disappointed with it, and I had to get a private teacher for my daughter because she really wanted to excel in. And that's just me, I was able to do that, but a parent who, whose child really wants to learn Strings really, really has difficulty learning for just a half, half a year. And, and that program would really bring out a lot in someone. I mean, throughout the United States, there's programs like that that really help, you know, underprivileged students, and I, and I think that, you know...
I think part of the problem in making the school systems evolve and always grow and progress and be better is getting the feedback from parents, ideas and suggestion boxes of some type, we gotta get communication from all aspects of the school system. And I have, you know, the idea that I had where people can anonymously even just make a suggestion and, you know, somehow get this to people up higher between the principals and teachers and then the school board, and then start making decisions. But part of what you're saying too is, it comes down to money too, and you don't have the staffing to be able to have those extracurricular activities, and that's why, you know, one of our, one of our ideas is to try and get more teachers, staff to this school and be able to go expand the extracurricular activities.
Because sometimes those activities are ones that bring in the students that, that need cluster help and need some help for...
You're expanding, you're making the children so much smarter in expanding their options and making a better school system and increasing the morale between parents and students and teachers, the morale is gonna come up too. I don't feel that, you know, it's a totally happy painted picture in the school system.
You just hit on, how do, how do you stay in the board? As a parent, whether it be through the school or through the, through the school board, either one. When I first came on and joined the PTO for the, for the Weverville District, I came in just to wait with all the parents there in the meeting. And out of the people that showed up for the meeting, I was the only parent, and three of the five board members showed up for their own meeting. Today, the past meeting that we just recently had, we were, and I pushed it, when I got on the board, I pushed it, got a team, got members to look at it. Who any of you remembers the old show, the Harper Valley PTO? Anybody remember that show?
Yeah.
That sits in the back of my mind, that's where you have your PTO meetings, you have a big forum where, I mean, the families are coming in, you've got questions being raised, of course, now all the chaos and everything like that going on in the program. So, we finally got pushed because they were running their meetings at 1:00 in the afternoon at one of the schools. I don't know about you guys, I worked for a living, and a lot of you parents do, they work the 8:5, 9:00 job. How are they gonna come to a school PTO meeting to find out what their kids are doing, what their school's doing, at 1:00 in the afternoon? Finally, I got pushed, got an understanding, "Look, okay, let's compromise. Let's have half of the school year at 1:00." Because yes, you do still have some parents that work night shift. Let's have some meetings at 1:00. The other half, let's make it 6:00. Would you believe after the first meeting that we had, the 6:00 meeting from the five people that we had showed up in the first meeting at 1:00, that evening meeting, we had 27 people show up, 27 parents show up. We also made a new Facebook page, we updated our, we created and updated our website for our organization website. Now, of course, we haven't gone to live TV yet for the school, for the PTO meetings, but hey, this is modern technology, folks, we're in 2012. And that's how everything is run, live time. We want it now, we don't wanna hear about it yesterday, we want the information there. We want live TV feed for the campus, for the school board, where everybody, if I can't make it in to the school board meeting because, I don't know, I had dental appointment, I had wisdom teeth taken out that day, and I can't make it, you know what, there's a meeting going on, boom, I watch it there on TV. Is there a way to have input? Yes, there's all sorts of technology out there that we've got to look at for parents like yourself to be able to have input and listen to what's going on. Instead of getting one board member's newsletter that might end up in your mailbox some way, somehow, you know, it shouldn't be that way, we should not have it that way.
I'd like to ask a question from the residents of the county, as well as a member of Buckland Board. But I'm asking you guys as private citizens, there's, I've, I've gone to the school board meeting for at least six months now, maybe, maybe a year. And there's a lot of antagonism on the board between different board members. And there's people lined up in, out into the halls waiting to make public comment just to complain about something. To me, that's a sign of a sick organization, there's something, there's something wrong Part of it is, I think, an unwillingness to get answers to questions to board, to a particular board member. And now, the next step has been, well, first, she could go to any employee and ask for information, and then they put some restrictions saying, "Well, you know, it's a 20-hour report, you might have to wait a week or something to get it," which is reasonable. But then they've made the restrictions, "Well, you have to go through the superintendent." Well, I think the superintendent got a little uncomfortable with, with the inquiry, so, you know, he wanted to get this out of it. Now, supposedly, the chairman of the board is gonna be in charge of censoring that one board member. And all the other board members have now agreed that they don't have to ask any questions and kind of make it equal, so everybody, nobody can ask questions at a board meeting. Does any of that make any sense to anybody here?
No.
So, my question is, at what point is the board member representing the constituents? Who is the board representing at that point? And I, as a citizen, would be extremely angered by the fact that I, I, the citizen, was muzzled. Because that's essentially what you have done, is you have muzzled your community, because the people sitting on that board are not sitting there for themselves. They aren't sitting there as only representatives for the administration. They are a go-between, between the community and the administration. And if you stopgap it right here in the middle, then you have muzzled a, you know, the community, you've muzzled one half of that equation. So, that, that angers me, and I say that that gets changed. I'm not even sure that's lawful. You know, I don't know the law, but if there isn't a law in place that forbids that, there sure ought to be. Because, you know, that would be like saying that people in Congress can't ask questions. Well, what the heck are they sitting up there for? Oh, yeah, to bicker between each other, that's right. Because somewhere down here, we've forgotten about the community and the constituents and the people that they represent. Go ahead, yes.
I'm Roy McWhorty. I was a principal and teacher in Buckland County for 37 years. I started my career at Valley Springs School with Bill Estes. And later, I went to Barnard'sville for 10 years, I was a principal for two years. And then I went to Weaverville for the rest of the time till the year 2000. I think there's two things that y'all need to be aware of. Well, first of all, I wanna say I admire y'all for coming here and opening yourself up for whatever any guy, anybody wanted to say, and I appreciate that. And I am very much interested, but there's two things that y'all may not be aware of. North Carolina, since 2010, dropped from 32nd in state and public support for the schools to 47th. The other thing you need to be aware of is the state of North Carolina, since 2010, laid off 3,000 teachers, or teaching positions. And some of the things are systemic, some of the problems. But now, that doesn't mean that many of these problems y'all are discussing can't be resolved, and I appreciate your efforts. But now, the second question I wanted to ask, and who's this group that you said was helping y'all, or what is it?
Buckland Board. Buckland Board.
Buckland Board. Does he provide money or just the board?
I can answer that, I'm, I'm on the board of the Buckland Board. We're, we're an organization of concerned citizens, four people that are involved, Robert Maltz, he was here earlier, but he had to go, Robert Maltz.
Do you have outside money that comes to you?
No. Well, we have money within the community, Buckland County.
But not from out of state?
No, none.
Okay. And then the second point I wanted to make, Mr. Freeman, did you go to Weaverville?
I did so.
How did I miss you? Or maybe you were such a good kid that I didn't...
I tried to, I started at the old middle school, Lane Street.
I was principal there.
Yep, and I came in there, it was crazy, ninth grade year, was when I came in.
Roy, you may have been out around hunting all this while this is going on, while Brian Zerx could...
Yeah, well, I've been saying, Mr. Freeman must've been a very good kid.
Never wrong.
Can I, can I speak to your 2010, you know, data that you have? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that a lot of those cuts were originally funded by a one-time stimulus money?
Yes, that high one.
Okay, so, here's where I have a problem with that, and I know that that's a wrong thing. Because that wasn't local, local people didn't make the decision, but here's our problem. You had a group of legislators that said, "Sure, we'll take that money." Now, instead of using that money for things that only needed to be funded one time, because that money was a gift, I mean, let's, let's just say that was a gift, they decided they were going to use that money for something that they were going to have to then continue to fund. Well, I get a birthday card with $100 in it, am I suddenly gonna start my monthly budget $100 more every month because I got a one-time gift? Absolutely not.
Well, no, that was heavily mandated.
To, to accept the money?
No, it was mandated to pay for teachers.
Mandated to pay for teachers.
Yes, from the Congress in Washington.
Okay, because my understanding was that stimulus money from the state did, did a lot of things, it wasn't just the salaries of teachers, that it went towards, you know, buildings and lots of other...
It was there for teachers, and then shooters, and for buildings, but nothing else.
But in fact, if I may, I mean, your point is very, very relevant, because at the time, the stimulus, governors and everybody else were very concerned about what happens after the stimulus money runs out. And I think a lot of states, perhaps state agencies loaded their budgets with those numbers, perhaps even this one, I don't know. And, and now they're seeing the pain because the gift is no longer coming. Their grandmother has passed on.
Right, and I don't think you should blame either party for that, you know, because I think both parties were at fault when it, when it came to that. But we still, all the more reason we have to learn how to live within...
Thank you again for opening yourself up, because you, you gotta get tough if you're gonna be a politician.
I'm a politician.
Well, you will be if you're on the board.
I'm, I'm always concerned...
Whether you like it or not, you will be.
And I'll be your most honest, true to the public politician.
I'll tell my teachers, "Bring anything in the office and tell them, don't run out in the community and tell everybody else, and I'll work with you."
That sounds beautiful.
And that's exactly what you should do.
My email will be available to everybody.
As a matter of fact, the last time of year I was at PTO at Barnard, at Weaverville, and one day we were, Bob Nesbit and I raised $40,000. I also talked Mr. Conrad out of $100,000. And he gave it to us.
So, you and I are actually, we would be a great team then, because I'm very good at raising money.
You're talking to the volunteer, I was volunteer, I had 300 volunteers.
It's, it's really easy. But I, I do have to clarify one thing when you're talking about out-of-state money, so that we can be completely honest here. I have received some out-of-state money, I received a $100 check from my father.
Oh, that's great.
He's actually my biggest donor, he lives in Georgia, so, just wanna be completely honest here, and that's actually gonna come out in the papers sometimes.
Yeah, I sent my, my son's kids are in the Charleston schools, and I've sent money down there to...
Outside, indeed.
Yes.
I'm gonna see you guys.
Thank you. I'd like to end, thank you for doing that.
I wanna follow up on what Gary said before, with all due respect, Gary and I disagree on this issue, is the, or parts of this issue, I'm assuming that all four of you feel pretty strongly about the transparency issue and any affront to transparency of basically budgets and other things that concern the school board. I've written on transparency also, I'm, I'm a buck for that. My, my question though has to do with your decision-making manner, I guess, so to speak, protocol, in taking in information. So, what I wanted to do, and I'm just kinda joking on your back here, if you allow me, is you all have an opinion about transparency and how the shutting down of a particular member, and I do that with kinda air quotes as well. What information have you received about this? I'm not talking in sort of cloak-and-dagger way, what information have you received to form your opinion about what's going on in transparency and the shutting down of schools?
I'm attending the meetings.
Attending the meetings, yeah, the meetings is, is an eye-opener. Anybody is invited to go watch this circus go on, it's ridiculous, it's elected officials trying to have a, to, to, you know, run the school system. And that leads to one of the points that I don't really care for much, is they do a, they'll do awards and ceremonies there to award teachers for longevity or, you know, different things, and I think that's great, and I don't want it to be misunderstood here, but I think that those are better fit for the community where that teacher worked. And say someone at Owen High School, Meg Turner, Principal of the Year, I think they probably would have the ceremony in that school for one thing. But they, they conduct these things during the meetings, it ends up running a meeting for three or four hours. I don't see that, I don't understand why, it, to me, it's a distraction. They're, the board members, we're, we're gonna be board members, we're there to conduct business, day-to-day business. I think, I really think those things are neat and all, but I don't feel that that's the proper forum. Talking about the transparency, just going to the meetings and seeing how, you know, someone asks a question, it becomes cloak-and-dagger. You can't help but be suspicious, it's human nature when someone asks a question, and then we tiptoe around that thing, we dance around the bushes for a while, questions never get answered. An example of when it was questioned about permitting processes and where they, were permits being pulled, were permits, if they were pulled, were they being inspected? You know, that question's never been answered, and they made, they had a big show, they had Matt Stone, who was head of inspection for Buckland County, and they had some other fellow, I can't remember his name, came out, and when the question was asked again, they said, "We're, we're gonna take care of this question right now," and they bring him up, said, "Matt, when you all inspect, how, tell me about your inspections, how you do." And this is, I'm sure has been filmed, Matt gets up there and says, "When I inspect, I inspect with the highest quality, I am trained in this, this, and I have all that, I, I inspect, when I inspect, I inspect like the safety of my family." Never answered a question, that question still has never been answered. You see what I'm saying? Did you, was this project inspected? When I inspect, I inspect, I'm a great inspector. The question was never answered. So, that's transparency issue right there. What are we hiding? You can't help but become more suspicious when somebody tiptoes around like that. My, my question is, thank you, my question was more about what are you guys doing to, to gather information, make a decision? You can sit, I've been in some of these meetings as well, the city council and county committees have some of these problems as well, where you get dog and pony shows as well. What are you doing besides that to, what kind of documents do you read, what kind of research do you do? What do you, and I don't want details, but...
Well, I can only say one thing from my experience and with my training and with my job and everything, I used to do a law enforcement. It's sort of like, for me, when I'd go to a domestic situation, when I was in law or something like that. Number one, everything is a two-sided street. You've got to listen to both sides, number one. I listen to the wife's side, I listen to the husband's side. Sometimes, you sit there. Why? Because Amy hit it just a minute ago. Everything's come to head, and all they want to do is vent. Get stuff out. You sit there and make sure they don't go to blows? You tend it out? Last thing I'd ask them before I leave, because there was no harm going to be done, or nobody's going to get offended by it or anything like that. Last question I'd ask them, ask both of them. You love him? Uh-huh. You love her? Uh-huh. Y'all have your night. The issue of it is, you take, except the last part of the love and everything, you take that, you come up to the podium, and you do a public comment. I don't care how we get our information. I don't care if you presented this aboard me, I don't care if it comes to me in an email, on a phone call, in Ingles Grocery Store. My next step should be going to the board and saying, hey, I had so-and-so, if they want to name him or whatever. This is a question they had, an issue that was brought up to them, or this is an issue they see. No matter how trivial, no matter how major, we need to sit and look at it as a board, we need to investigate it? Find out whether the allegation or the situation is true or false. If it's true, then we need to figure out what we need to do to fix the problem. It's an easy task.
I've probably attended four board meetings and the people on the board over the years have just watched them. That's why I like to see it televised. You don't get the same thing in reading as you do in watching. In my opinion, in my opinion, I've said that board meetings last one o'clock in the morning. Board meetings shouldn't last over an hour, an hour and a half. And the reason for that is, in work sessions, you discuss, and everybody knows what's going on, they know what's going to be up. And that, then when you get to the official board meeting, you move through it pretty quickly. That is my opinion. Board meetings, and we do this, and we have a way of doing this. We cover all this other stuff and wire folks out before they get to the comment. And if they're willing to say something positive, by the time they get to the comment, they're so aggravated because of that, then it comes out wrong. I think you've got to hear the public first. I really do. And in board meetings, I've seen them get into that, and like I said, when it lasts to one o'clock in the morning, you think, wow, is this really what things ought to be like? Good leadership won't allow that.
There's a certain intermediate step there that seems to be missing in my brain anyway. Because you have, yeah, I agree that the board meetings, they need to really move, get things done, I agree. But that means that the public does not have access to the process. Now we have the work session, all right? But, and I'm thinking, well, we really should invite the public to the work session. But boy, that can really bog down a work session. Where's that middle ground, where's that maybe creative work session?
It should be clarified, too.
Yeah, but those are final ideas.
You've got to have, you've got to have a agenda. You've got to do things in decency and order. But you've got to be respectful to ever who's speaking and whatever questions asked. I've always said this, when a kid came to my office or teacher, if they asked a question, if they were smart enough to ask the question, I ought to try to help them, and we ought to give an answer. You don't need to walk out there and feel like you haven't been heard. Most of the time, it's just being heard.
I think you might have the answer to this. Are the schools wired with fiber optic wire? That, so that if they were, or the administration office was able to take advantage of current technology? And stream their meetings and work sessions live? Are the schools wired with that fiber optic cable to charter or whatever?
All the schools that aren't wired are wired, set up in wires.
But that's a difference than being fiber optic going into some building, because I know it goes into UNCA. I know that the PEG funds for public education and government TV channel, that the county and the city run their government channel on. There's also an educational channel for that. I'm not sure what channel it is on charter. But part of that franchise agreement was that those educational areas were wired with fiber optic cable? So that the feed could go from the school, from the education part of the thing, to charter cable and then be televised. So I thought maybe you might have the answer that you were...
What we're talking about like that, I promise you I will find that.
And then my question would be, are we using that money now? It sounds like what you're telling me is that we have that money available, so maybe if we're not doing it, we shouldn't be.
Yeah, I mean, because under the education part, you can check with the revenue, the state revenue department. And there's a spreadsheet that tells you exactly how much is collected, because we're all, if we have DirecTV or Charter, we're paying forty-three cents a month. Part of that is supposed to go to education, whatever education would cover. And I think UNCA has their own little TV channel.
I do believe we have some of that, because I remember that being discussed at one of the meetings, there was some money because of that. And somehow it just been discovered that, you know, people are paid every month for some money that goes into a pot that helps them.
And there's a warehouse full of equipment?
Yes.
Yes, there's a warehouse full of equipment that was taken from the public access station that was closed down? That was about half a, five hundred thousand dollars in equipment somewhere in the basement of the city or county building? That could be accessed, and some of the equipment is forty-five thousand dollar TV cameras.
And this is why it's great to have these types of meetings, because you bring that stuff to light. Maybe, maybe nobody in the administration's even aware of, you know, how to access that money or to go and get that.
Or the fiber optic cable that would run in.
I've got two points, and I think Alan hit on one of them, but you're, I'm seeing the same thing as you, Alan, that we're missing the public input on the part of the meeting. You know, we expedite the meetings, but I think that's one of the points you're hitting on, we just went right past the public comment now. Well, you really, because you really end up with a can of worms, I mean, just administratively, you can just... It's a big work session, and then they said, this is what we're going to discuss, in a printed agenda, where people actually can see the agenda as they come to the meeting. Yeah, and I think it seems to me that even people choose not to insert themselves into the conversation. Generally, if they're made aware, and then they go, oh, well, I don't agree with that, but you know something, they made us aware.
I do think the public comment outcome, about the first thing we do in a board meeting, hear where the public is.
And then the other thing is, I feel like board members need to spend the day working different jobs in schools to see what their effect is on the school system. I get a CD email all the time, I don't know if I get a county email, all sorts of stuff that I don't really care about, but then there's a thing about that I do and all that. I don't see why the, these are all very simple processes when it came down to it. I can't see why the board head couldn't put out this. Because you don't want comment on tonight's meeting, because it's a done deal already. Okay, we need comment on something that's three months down the road.
I think that the Asheville City Council conducts their city council very well. You know, I mean, it's government. But at least, you know, they do have appropriate public comment, and they do listen to public comment before making this, you know, voting on things and decisions. And they do try to get the information out ahead of time, so that you are aware to come to this city council meeting at this time. You know, so they try to make it as available as possible to people.
Gordon Smith.
Yeah, the other thing, doing their meetings that way is, they don't set for public comment only. But Fruni Hooligan, he always puts the agenda on the blog, and he also invites input for agenda items before it actually is held at the meeting. So the public has an opportunity to ask for their own agenda items, rather than being told what they're going to be talking about.
Could I make one suggestion on that, though, if we're going to do that, is that maybe, I think that that should fall on the responsibility of maybe going into the Funkenford County Schools website to make suggestions? Because if you do it through somebody's personal blog, like Gordon Smith, Lisa Baldwin's, sometimes that could be construed as this particular person's opinion and this person's personal agenda.
It should be on the website. It should be a spot where people can put in comments and ask for these things.
Right.
I agree with that completely. The point that you guys keep bringing up is how people want to come in and then...
I can tell a couple of people, they can go out like in two days or something. I sit down and talk about words from my DSR, I try to get ideas on how I can approach things that have their own perspective, like communication being loud. So I don't feel like I could be a piece of town to them and then about some...
You do realize that when you're on the school board, you're on the school board. Like it's when, I mean, what do you mean? They say, you're not just, when you go to a school board meeting, and you're on the board and you're holding your monthly meeting. When you go to Ingles, when you go to a football game, when you go wherever, you are on the school board. And when somebody approaches you and they've got an issue or a question or whatever, what's my job? To listen, no matter where I'm at. So that's what, and I'm still here. I'm still running.
And I would like to say, you have to ask yourself, have you had that same level of communication with the current board members?
Well, and I would say, no, I'm very clear about that.
But that's what, that's for any voter, I think that's what it comes down to, is have you had that level of communication? Have they met your expectations?
And so I do have a question about the budget, that you guys will be kind of ruling over, I guess. I don't know how the decisions are made on that, but...
They approve the budget.
Right, so we all know that Funkenford County's budget's laid out. You made a comment earlier about, or somebody did, about people being asked to reach supplies for their kids. And the idea being that the school system should be more able to handle that directly. And I would support that, because I volunteer at a food bank as well. There's a lot of parents, if those kids take home that Friday, a bag of food for the weekend, that's how they eat. And so if you've got parents that are so strapped, that they have to have help from a food bank, that tells me that something needs to change. So that if we're talking about equity in education for all children, all levels, then you need to make sure that they have that accessible. And people should not have to feel like they have to go to some charity like Edwin to get a backpack for school.
Let me tell you what happened earlier this year. One of my former colleagues has a grandkid in the third grade, and they needed paper, so he takes a case of paper and gives it to the teacher. And the teacher says, I can't take this, because you have to take it to the office, and I can't use it in here, you have to take it to the office, and he goes to everybody in the school. And he said, that seems strange. I was buying it for my teacher's classroom, I could have not. You know what he did with the paper? He took it back to Staples. Well, things like that shouldn't happen. You can make adjustments. I know in Black Mountain, there were so many organizations that come by all the time, say, Mr. Freeman, can we help with this? Can we help with this? Kids shouldn't have to worry about it. If a parent has three kids, and you get a list, and you're going to spend sixty or seventy dollars a child, that'll do you in on your budget. That's not right. It's called a public education, and it's supposed to be a free public education. No, and I use this, and it made me stop this. I'd say to the parents, if you want to make a donation for your classroom, that's fine, we'll buy all the stuff. And if you have twenty kids, you know what I discovered? Ten, fifteen of them would pay, and the other, they would also pay for the rest in the class. And what I learned from it, it is more blessed to give than receive. It gave these folks a compliment, because they got to give, and we got to receive it to give to them.
Yes, I agree with that, and I actually have donated products, things like books or paintbrushes, different things that were on needs for classrooms in general, a microscope. So I believe people should be able to do that. However, it should not be strictly that, because like with my daughter's school, they plan these field trips. And they've actually had to have one or two canceled or postponed, because there were not enough people that could pay for it. So that's what I'm talking about, is that it should not fall on the parents, and for me, that's explained to a child, well, you can't go because your family's too poor.
I don't think you ever do that. If you go on the class, and this one as well, materials, that one must have the materials. But if you go on a field trip, it's always understood we all go or nothing. Not because of finances, there may be some other reason, but no, you can't do that. If you do that, you separate it, you divide it, and that's what's happening. Now, we've discussed all this today. Let me tell you what this group's main purpose is. We want to do what's best for these kids, the students in our county. That's where we want to focus, on the academics we've gotten. We've focused on a lot of other things trying to get there, but I would rather be in a board meeting, us talking about what we're doing for the kids? What academic program is working? Have we thought about this? I hear this school over in this county does this. Has anybody been over there to visit to see how you do that? I've heard that this public school is a charter school, that they're doing something like this that works? Black Mountain Primary did the arts, A-plus. I like the arts, I like music, drama and all that. We've visited schools, what I've discovered, if somebody's doing something better, and we can't improve on it, we ought to be over there and visit, see what they're doing, get their ideas. Nobody comes up with a original idea, you have to get others together, and that's the approach I would want us to take.
Because if we elect you guys all on that one thing, right, you guys are elected on the board. You know, you hear a lot about the presidential debates, about what's happened with the whole debt issue.
I, as a citizen, don't know all the details of how everything works within a board. So as a citizen, can you inform me as to, if you're sitting in a meeting starting tomorrow? And an issue comes up that needs to be worked on in some way, and not going just beyond the talking, let's say it's a financial thing, repairing something? How do I, as a citizen, gauge whether that is actually being dealt with well? Like, should it take like six months, or how quickly should I see a change in the board system? Once you guys, and there may be other people who are not so great for it or not, I mean...
You can answer that, yeah.
Like my learning curve, are you talking about at what point should you stop sending results? I'm going to give an example. At what point can we not blame our predecessors? Okay, no, I'm serious.
But no, it can take months.
Well, no, but you do blame the predecessors. That's the thing about the election that bothers me, because people assume that a president goes in there, and not four years, it's going to be like a miraculous post-term.
Right, but there is a point that you have to...
They don't look at, they don't have to either clean up or benefit from the last administration. So I know there's some cleanup stuff.
Okay.
So how, how do we know that that is being efficiently done? Because obviously, four years, we're not out of debt as a nation. Do we wait twelve years?
Right, right.
So what kind of timeframe can I, as a citizen, look at to see if I'm satisfied with who I let in?
I will say this for me, personally, if we're still talking about contamination six months from now, I'm over it. Because this shouldn't take that long. There are some top priority issues that I think all of us can agree on, because they are the same issues that keep being brought up at these board meetings? That must be addressed, and you have to get it done.
But there's changes that have, there's a lot of changes.
Yeah, but there are certain major issues that must get done, I would say, in the first, within the first six months.
And are you guys writing a public update as to what, at what point you guys have gotten to by, between meetings?
There's already the one set up.
I was going to say, I would think BNB and video, you know, going out, like you said, you know, just...
But I'd like to provide something to make. You have to meet, and you've made a decision. Come back to the next meeting. Do you give an update at that time as to where this issue is, or are you doing it?
We should, we should.
Yeah, we're in the newspaper, there's a cover, all that is covered.
Well, to be honest, there's a lot of parents that either don't have, don't use the have, or don't have anything to have TVs, they don't subscribe to payers. I'm talking about beyond...
Here's three or four things that must be dealt with pretty quickly. It usually say...
Guys, I appreciate you coming out. I've got to get back to work.
Thank you very much.
Three or four things, you've got to deal with the toxic part, you've got to deal with what's happening in maintenance. We've got to review our AIG plan, which is coming up. Some of those things have to be done pretty quickly, and people need to know where we are with those things. And then we've got to get to work on some other things, to be sure of the budget items, because the budget is now just being presented, looking through the budget. But some of this, it should be going on. We ought to have an answer part. The public needs to know. Now, when we do that, we need to tell the folks what's going on. And that's where the public needs to hold us accountable. You said you was going to do this, why haven't you?
Thank you.
Yeah, because there's questions right now that have been asked, and no progress, none.
And my personal...
The next board meeting, either we're going to be all ready to take over the board, or there'll be still on the board. That's where we're going to be, the next board meeting.
Yeah, yes.
Can I just mention, they've just scheduled, as of last night, uh, there'll be a meeting this Wednesday, October thirty-first, at one-thirty, in the afternoon, at one-thirty PM, uh, about the hazardous waste situation.
Is that the public meeting that they're gonna be...
And they specify that there will be no public comment. Um, will not be allowed to be...
May, may I ask, have they informed you of, just the results of what they found out, that you know what that's gonna be?
Uh, no, I mean, by the... That's maybe, but I have no idea, as a board member, I have no idea what this meeting is about.
But that's hard, the timing is actually a specific gender division, two thirty AM.
Can I, can I, as a parent, call, uh, Jan Blunt and... Automatic phone call going out, and then it's in fact that in her job description, something that she should do.
But...
Okay, I mean, 'cause I, I agree, I actually should be having to do word of mouth.
But this is gonna be in the middle of the day, when school's going on.
I understand that, I understand, but I think if you get one person there, that could then get the information to others.
Here's, here's, here's my idea of it. If, if it's a good report, you know, and there's no waste, no toxic there, and you do that, then you announce that to everybody and get them there to hear that. Now, if there's some question about it, and, and this is what I'm saying, good news or bad news, everybody ought to be able to hear what's going on, and, and you're right, that's not the right time of day. That ought to be announced on TV, ought to be announced by, uh, alerting out all the school systems, so everybody... Yes, yes, yes.
I will say this, that is my birthday, and I guess I'll be sitting and learning about toxic waste on my birthday.
And that is, that's how...
'Cause I will be there.
I, I've said this, and I'm gonna stop with this. It seems to me the president is getting more interested in one board member and bumping forward than you have doing what's best for the kids. Let's focus on the kids, kids are my...
My whole question is, why aren't you doing that just on the screen?
You're invited on Saturday. As a board member, I wasn't even asked if that was a good time for me, personally. Um, I just received an email notice that this is your board meeting time.
Oh, boy, picture that.
Well, I'd like to say, some, somebody said something about how are, how are we being prepared for six months? I have been either using my camera or my iPad or my big camera, whenever I can get it set up and get the, the mics working, and, um, I got all riled up, started attending the meetings, and I will continue meetings until things get a little better. And I'll be videotaping them, and these are, this is being livestreamed.
And, and I would like to thank you for coming, because I know that you had an option to, you know, stay in bed and enjoy your Saturday morning coffee, and with your three friends, but, um, that you, as a citizen, find that this is a very important, um, issue, and with that being said, um, put you on the spot a little bit here. What are you doing Wednesday at one?
Oh, I'm gonna be there. We'll be there.
Unfortunately, I'm not.
And that's Thursday.
It's Thursday, is it Thursday or...
It's the thirtieth, right?
August thirty-first.
Oh, thirty-first.
Yeah, Wed, uh, October thirty-first.
Yeah, I'll see y'all, I'll see y'all there, I'll have a camera in hand. We'll see.
Yeah, I can do that.
Just bring me cake, 'cause it's my birthday. Thank you.
Bring some cupcake.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sign off.